Welcome. I am Andrea Hobbly, Vice President of the League of Women Voters, Woodbury Cottage Grove Area. The purpose of the League, national, state, and local, is to empower voters and defend democracy. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. Its mission is to encourage informed and active participation of citizens in government, work to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influence public policy through education and advocacy. The League strengthens our communities by promoting voter registration, conducting candidate forums, and informing voters on public policy through education. And now I'll turn it over to Roger Green, who is moderating today.
Thank you, Andrea. Our first forum tonight features the two candidates for the Washington County Commission, District Four, Carla Bigum and Keith Frankie. Each candidate will be asked to provide a one-minute opening statement. We will then go in alphabetical order for opening statements, which means candidate Carla Bigum will go first. The reverse order will be used for the closing statements, allowing candidate Keith Frankie to go first. With each question, the order of response will be reversed. Candidates will have one minute to answer questions and 30 seconds available for any rebuttal. Our timekeepers tonight are League of Women Voter volunteers Sandy Alexander and Betsy Stites. They will hold up signs to indicate 30 seconds remaining, then 15 seconds remaining, and finally stop. The questions have been submitted by voters to the League email or during voter service events in the community. The viewing audience can submit questions by calling or texting the number displayed on the screen during the forum. We will not have time to ask all the questions that are submitted, and League volunteers will decide which questions will be presented in order to address a variety of topics. At the finish, candidates will each have one minute for a closing statement. The forum is being livestreamed and broadcast by the South Washington County Telecommunications Commission. The forum is being recorded and can be viewed until Election Day on the SWCTC website and on the Woodbury Cottage Grove Area League of Women Voters website. So let us begin. The opening statements, then. Carla Bigum, you are first.
Thank you, and thank you to the League and the Cable Commission and the volunteers for doing this tonight, and everybody watching at home. I'm Carla Bigum. I'm a lifelong resident of South Washington County. I was born and baptized in Newport and raised in Cottage Grove, where I live, with my husband and our two dogs. You know, county government is where my heart is and where my passion is. Through your support, the voters' support, over the years, I've humbly served as a city council member, state representative, county commissioner, and state senator, which is my current position. And I've been able to build relationships to deliver results for the residents. I'm proud to have the endorsements of Cottage Grove Mayor Myron Bailey, St. Paul Park Mayor Sandy Dingell, and Newport Mayor Lori Elliott. And that shows about my commitment to being able to work with others to get accomplishments for our community.
Thank you. Candidate Frankie?
Thank you, Roger. Yes, I would also like to thank the League of Women Voters, the Cable Commission, and the volunteers all for coming in, and for everybody who's tuning in or who will watch us later on. My name is Keith Frankie. I'm running for county commissioner, District Four. I'm a dad. I'm a grandpa. I'm a small business owner of the Park Cafe and Frankie's Corner Bar. I've served as state representative for two terms, city council for St. Paul Park, and mayor of St. Paul Park for six years. I'm running for county commissioner because, being up at the Capitol, I realized that I'm kind of sick of the politics of politics. And I feel that the county is where the rubber meets the road and is the workhorse of all the policies that we implement up at the Capitol and the connection to the cities. So I want to take my qualifications, my own life experiences of dealing with the county and working together and building coalitions to do what I can at the county level, and I'm just happy to be here and ask for everybody's support. Thank you.
Thank you both. The first question, if elected, what will be your top three priorities? Mr. Frankie?
I guess I haven't really got much thought to my top three priorities in that order. Priority number one is taxation. We need to get a handle on our property taxes. Interest rates are going high, valuations are going high, property taxes are going high. How can we get a handle around that? But in order to get a handle around that, it rolls into number two, which would be, how do we implement services without that taxation? So we need to figure out services that work, services that are beneficial, and then from there, building coalitions. We build the coal. My third priority would be to build coalitions between businesses, between developers, the county, the cities, nonprofits. By bringing everybody together, we can help to cut those costs, we can help to implement those services, and build a better product and serve our citizens a lot better.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bigum?
Thank you. I think with the priorities being preparing for our area, which is growing very fast and it's actually aging, and we need to prepare by building coalitions, but also when we're dealing with our budgets. I believe that with all the growth going on in South Washington County, infrastructure is top priority, so I look forward to continuing. When I was on the county board, I was able to help get improvements to 70th Street, 19, Ravine Park, doing those kind of investments by working with others, and finally investing in that infrastructure. And finally, I think mental health and chemical health services are very important. Through the opioid settlement money, the county is going to be receiving a lot of funds, and I believe we should be reinvesting those into our community for awareness, specifically in our schools and parents, and getting more services available to those that need it.
Any rebuttal, Mr. Frankie?
I don't know if I would really call it a rebuttal. I would just be in agreement that mental health and chemical dependency and addiction issues are actually an area of mine that is very important. And how do we find those services that work, that are going to get the people to help? And the opioid money that Carla has mentioned is definitely going to help some when it settles down to the counties. So that will definitely be something that we need to take care of and something that's going to help us. Once we figure those systems and that cyclical cycle of addiction, it helps reduce costs in other areas. So definitely going to be something to focus on in the future.
Any final comments?
No.
Okay. Our next question, what actions would you take to address affordability of housing in our county? How do you define affordability specifically as it refers to median income? And Ms. Bigum, you're first for that one.
Thank you. This is a very important topic, and at the state, we have utilized a lot of funds for housing and making housing more affordable. We need to utilize and advocate to the state even more for housing bonds. At times, it's been the only bonding bill we've been able to get through, which is unfortunate. That's a big thing, being able to partner and maximize those resources. I also would say cutting bureaucracy and red tape to make sure that applications are processed in a timely manner for families in need. And I think that's a big way we can help partner with nonprofits. It's been done in other areas of the country, and I think being able to do that and partner to have the most efficient and effective resources are things that will help with housing and affordability.
All righty. Mr. Frankie?
Thanks, Roger. You know, at this rate, we're going to get through about 100 questions. You know, affordable housing is a tricky thing, and the one thing that I want to work on is working with developers on building a more affordable product and partnering with them. And also something that I think all of us in this area have been discussing and working on is not only affordable housing, but senior living. We're having a lot of issue right now with our seniors being able to stay not only in their homes but live within rentals based upon a fixed income. And we are allowing corporations and developers to build these based on money that is given, you know, tax breaks, yet we don't qualify those appropriately, which allows them to raise the rents, which is way too high for somebody on a fixed income. So I think at the county level, we need to start those discussions to make, once again, build those connections to help our seniors and to help people transition from affordable to a fixed-income living. And that's going to be a priority of mine.
Any rebuttal?
I would just add that when you're looking at places, and I believe Representative Frankie is talking about Dominion, which is an issue we both have been involved in, when the CDA or a city uses grant money, I believe we should be looking at some of those contracts and agreements to have transparency and flexibility for the tenants in those agreements.
Any final comments?
No, thank you. Thanks, Roger.
All righty. Our next question, how would you ensure that election laws do not create barriers to the freedom to vote in Washington County while also ensuring safe and secure elections? And let's see, back to Mr. Frankie. Lost track there.
Right. Well, that's a, I guess I don't necessarily understand the question. I think that from our level, we would just advocate that the elections are run fairly and that people are allowed to vote. Election laws are made at the state level, so we would, once again, talk to our partners at the state level. I think right now, the biggest thing we're having an issue with is getting people in to sign up to be election judges, and that's what I'm hearing, is people to actually run the elections. It's hard to make sure anything functions properly if you don't have the people to run it. And just that alone can be a barrier when people are standing in line for hours and they're already frustrated with politics, and then they're like, I have to get to work. I'm just done. So I think from that aspect, you know, looking at somehow even raising the rates of getting election judges in, do we pay them more? What do we do? Do we, you know, things like that, that make it smoother and easier to vote.
Ms. Bigum?
So I would say that looking at being an advocate because, to the state, because the counties do administer the elections, and they do a fantastic job. They are free and they are fair elections, and they work hard. But there are things that we can advocate. And now I've been on both sides of being a commissioner and a legislator. I think something like making sure direct-feed ballots are the way we do it for in-person voting, early voting, the whole time. That is something that we should be looking at. And I think there are other ways that we should be connecting with our Elections Division to make things more efficient for them.
Next question, what do you see as the biggest challenges to mental health and social services in our country, and how would you address them? That was part of both of your opening remarks. Ms. Bigum?
Man, workforce shortage in this area is huge. There's just a lack of professionals available that are trained. That's a huge barrier for getting service. So anybody out there that's looking to go into a profession, you're graduating from college, whatever, like, look at that, because we really need a lot of help in that area for workforce development. And I would say housing. Housing is a barrier. It's stability for people, and it's a barrier for people that have mental health and chemical health needs to be able to have that stability. So those, I think, are the two largest barriers. And funding, from the state level and the federal level, to continue to provide services is always a barrier as well. And especially in a time when these demand is increasing and the services are just not there.
Okay. Mr. Frankie?
Thank you. Yeah, it was funny how in that question, it mentioned within the country, and I know just within our state, a lot of what Carla said is true, and it's not only that, it's red tape, it's assistance, it's equality, it's the implementation, crisis beds. I mean, just getting people that helped to start with, we're having issue, not only because of the workforce and the training and the professionals to do the job, but it's about how do we help connect them to the places that they need along the way? Every time there's a transition in somebody's life, whether it's a mental health issue or an addiction issue, at every transition point, that becomes a critical point in their recovery. And we need to make sure at those points that we have investments or areas or people in place to make those smooth transitions, because then that will lead to a more positive income or outcome. And those are the things that I advocate for.
Any rebuttal?
No.
Our next question, if there were to be budget cuts during your term, what are the most essential county services that you would advocate to preserve? And let's see, we're on to Mr. Frankie again.
Well, I think, you know, to begin with, at least for right now, and I see us transitioning into a different area in a year or two, once they figure out what to do with the money. But right now, at least at the state level, government, I always say, has more money than God right now, and they just don't know what to do with it, and right now, can't figure out how to give it back. And after that, I think we're going to be in a pinch if this economy doesn't turn around if things don't change. So, I mean, the avocation definitely is going to be, I think, that public safety and the mental health and assistance programs, because all of those, like I've always said, work together. And if we can keep those systems in place, then we're helping to reduce the cost in others. So I'll just go from there. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Bigum?
So county services are essential services. The county budget is filled, and it's over 60%, closer to 70% of mandated spending by the feds and the states. We have no choice, but when they don't give the money to fulfill those mandates, that falls onto the property taxes, but we still have that responsibility. Washington County's budget's around $320 million. Over 60% of that, so close to $180 million, is unfunded mandates. And so we really have to take the money that is with the state and implement it for the essential services. Health and human services, the largest part of the county's budget, mental health, chemical health, public safety, and workforce development. Right now, we're fortunate enough to have a very low unemployment, but there's so many sectors that have a workforce issue because they can't get people to apply for jobs. So we have to work on that collectively with our local businesses.
Any rebuttal?
No, thanks.
Okay. Our next question, what are your thoughts on reducing the contributing factors to our changing climate and proposals to address the effects of it, and what can the county do about it? And we're starting with Ms. Bigum.
So, one, I proudly, since I have been on the city council, advocated for legislation and funding to clean up the contamination of PFOS in our area. So continuing to make sure that that money is spent to remediate that effort. I'm a big proponent of open space and utilizing the legacy funds and whatever money we can leverage from the state and the feds for open space. And I also think, one thing that's near and dear to my heart is the Ramsey and Washington County Energy Center in Newport and Recycling Center in Newport, and hopefully turning that into energy through curbside organics and removing that waste out of our system, continuing that program that is in a pilot phase right now. Those are the things that I believe we can work together on to clean up our environment from a county level.
Mr. Frankie?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, just in, while Carla was talking, I mean, I wrote down ag, green space, recycling, things like that. And once again, it's about working with our partners at the state and federal level to find out what we can do. What is the county purview to put their stamp or promote a policy that does things that works on climate? I think that anything that we can do that is effective, efficient, and that works is a discussion worth having, because we see that it's happening. So I think, you know, maintaining our parks, not losing our parks, requiring more green space, and things like that is definitely where we go from there.
Okay. Additional comments?
Yeah, real quick, one other thing I was very proud of, we got a national award from the National Association of County Officers when I was on the board for a program that I worked with our staff on and started in Ravine Park, having goats eat invasive shrubs. And so it's stuff like that where it's not, it's environmentally sustainable and attracts people to our parks. So those are the types of things we should be working on countywide.
Okay. All righty. Our next question, switches gears a little bit, what is the role of county government in addressing the impact of rapid growth and development on the quality of life in the county? Mr. Bigum, or Mr. Frankie?
No, that would be John. What is the, I guess, the quality of life and the rapid growth and the county's position, you know, the county's responsibility position, I'm not sure if I got either way. I think for one, we need to figure out how to build those partnerships and not only work with the growth, but understand where the growth is happening, where the growth is coming. And then we also need to not over-invest. This is part of my thing, where I think sometimes we're going to run into a thing with these developers. You know, back in the day, the developers used to come in and say like, hey, we'll do this for the county or the city, let us develop. Now the developers are like, hey, will you give us this or that so we can develop? I think that balance needs to be readjusted some to have that discussion, so we can help, you know, offset some of those long-term tax, property taxes and things at the time and reinvest in our smaller, older cities. But continue to work with our other city partners and go from there. Thank you.
Roger, would you please repeat the question?
Sure. The question is asking what the role of county government is in addressing the impact of, essentially, the balance between rapid growth and development on the quality of life in our county.
So as I'm door-knocking in, whether it's Newport, Cottage Grove, or Woodbury, and St. Paul Park, and you hit some of these county roads where a lot of this new development, especially in the southern part of Woodbury, is happening, the number one thing they talk about is they would like bike paths or walking paths on the busy county roads so that they feel safe and they can get from one development to the next. And we know they're popping up like, you know, Pop-Tarts in a toaster, because we are growing rapidly. So I think looking at those livability issues and connectivity issues with our bike trails and our regular trails that we can do for our residents is huge. The other one, I would say, we need to partner and support for the Gold Line, which is a bus rapid transit line starting in the years, and I commend Commissioner Wyke and Commissioner Kowalski for their advocacy on that, and I've always been a supporter of that, and hoping that we can give transit options to the southernmost part of Washington County.
Okay. Additional comments?
Yeah, thanks, Roger. Along that line, I think making sure we're all on the same page as far as the quality of life and impact to the citizens, between the cities, developers, whether it's business, whether it's housing, and the county, not only in the here and the now, but looking forward in the future and having those discussions about how the development's going to happen, where it's going to happen, when it's going to happen, so we can have those discussions for that connectivity, whether it's trails, streets, roads, bridges, whatever it needs to be, as long as we're always maintaining that we're on the same page to move that forward.
Okay. Any final comments? All righty. This question's getting a little more specific. Aggregate industries have extended mining operations into the Mississippi River, promising to fill the drilled holes with unusable materials. What would you propose to ensure that these operations do not produce harmful contaminants to the Mississippi River that provides drinking water for literally millions of people? And Ms. Bigum, you get that one first.
Plain and simple, they ought to follow the process, follow the laws, follow the process, all the studies. That's all we ask. And I think that is what we've asked from many of the companies in this area that have had issues with polluting, is we just want you to follow the law and do the studies. So that's what I would say we can do, and we can make sure that they are doing them and hope that they are enforced, and be present at meetings to hear from the residents to do such.
Mr. Frankie?
No, I would have to agree with that. I mean, honestly, right now in this area, everything we've been through with 3M, I mean, a lot of people, even up at the Capitol, when I'm talking to people, and they don't get it. They don't understand. Not only are we talking about a serious potential impact, we're talking about a fear that most of us have living in this area of the quality of our water. And we need to make sure that those processes are being followed. We need to make sure that those permits and everything else is being filed properly and that what is being done needs to be done. Because it's, people, when I'm out door-knocking and talking to people, I said, when you have a young mother who's crying because she's worried about the quality of her water, I said, then maybe you'll understand what goes on in our area. And I invite all my legislative friends down. I'm like, if you want to come knock doors with me, feel free, and you'll understand what we're talking about when it comes to the quality of water in this area.
Okay. Any rebuttal comments? All righty. Our next question, how do you plan to ensure that the concerns of all cities in your district are heard, including small ones like Gray Cloud Island? And Mr. Frankie gets that one first.
Would you repeat the question, please, Roger?
Yeah. How do you plan to ensure that the concerns of all cities in your district are heard, including small ones like Gray Cloud Island?
The same as I've always done. I come from St. Paul Park. We're neighbors right there. I mean, we, Gray Cloud, parts of Gray Cloud have now become St. Paul Park, and I talk to most of them at the cafe just about every week. So the concerns, I will just continue to do what I always do, and that is advocate for the little guy. Not only the small cities, the small townships, the small businesses, the person who's left behind. And that's what I've always done and I will always continue to do. I know all those guys. They have my number. If they have a concern, I'll be right there for them.
Ms. Big?
I think being present in the community is very important, and I'm usually at every event, whether it's in Gray Cloud Island or Denmark, St. Paul Park, Newport, Cottage Grove, I love it. It's what my passion is. It's how you best represent people, because they come up to you and they tell you their concerns, and you can help them. Also, when I was county commissioner, what I did, and I actually did that through as a legislator too, but I invited the mayors and the township chairs of every community to a meeting in January, where we would sit around, and they would give their priorities for the year, I would give mine, we would look for areas of collaboration and being able to partner up and help and support each other, and that's what it's about, so that we can have, South Washington County is the best place, I think, to live and to raise a family and to go to school and to enjoy our parks, and we're all in this together. So we have to have a unified front, and I'm very proud to have the endorsements of all the local mayors.
Any follow-up? All righty. Our next question, what would you recommend for enhancing the county's recycling and environmental efforts? And Ms. Bigum, you get that one first.
Oh, again, I'm going to go back to getting the curbside organics. That is something that started years ago. I'm glad that it's in pilot now and should be moving next year into homes. They have targeted areas, but to me, that is a top priority. It's about jobs, and the Ramsey County Recycling Center, Ramsey Washington County Recycling Center in Newport expands with the program with the curbside organics. Those are good IEBW worker programs and workers, and proud to have their endorsement. Expanding that will help clean our environment, deal with our waste. Remember, that's all Ramsey, all Washington County waste. And I also think continuing to partner in multi-housing, seeing how we can continue to do that, and in the commercial area as well, on how we can help properly recycle, reduce food, particularly in organics.
And Mr. Frankie?
I would say the one thing, you know, on top of all of that is promotion, education, getting people to understand what the recycling and reuse programs and projects do and how beneficial they are. This also brings to mind, when we're talking about recycling, reusing, right now, we're having an issue in our area, and it really doesn't have much to do with the county, and maybe it could, I don't know, but this is how things are solved. You just spitball a little bit, is our compost sites aren't allowed to be open certain times because they can't find the help. So, I mean, there's issues just with simple composting of your yard waste and things like that, or because of the abuses of the compost- like that, or because of the abuses of the compost sites, so it's taking every little aspect that we can, but I think that, once again, gets back to promotion, to education, and giving people the opportunity, teaching them how that's gonna help in the long run.
Very good. Feedback? Okeydoke. Our next question. COVID-19 caused a new focus on public health. What measures would you support to promote public health in our county? Mr. Frankie, you get that one first.
COVID-19, you know, I would promote whatever keeps us safe, honestly. I haven't been on, too much on one side or the other, but I know it was hard, and I know it was hard for all of us, as a small business owner, in the, in the hospitality industry, being a small bar and restaurant owner, I mean, I know it was hard, and I think that it was scary. So, I think, for one, it's about continuing to put out the information, continuing to encourage people to do what they need to do to keep themselves safe, and making sure that, that people are heard about the insecurities of the whole situation. So, whatever's gonna keep us safe and healthy, that's what I'm for.
Ms. Bigum?
So, I think our public health department in Washington County, and we both share Dakota County as well, have done a tremendous job, basically starting from nothing, cuz we didn't know much about this, if anything, right, to what we've gone through in the last two years, which has been extremely difficult. It's been a hard two years on people, on our frontline workers, and businesses, and so, I think one of the best things we can do is continue to get out information to people, so that they can keep themselves healthy, keep their families healthy. I think we have to listen to the professionals, believe in science, and trust that together we're gonna continue to fight this, and we're coming out of it, and I'm hopeful that we'll just continue to get the information needed to keep everybody safe.
Any additional comments?
Nope.
Okay. Switching gears here. What is your position on making the waters at Ravine Park more accessible for kayaks and canoes? If we need it, what should be done? Ms. Bigum?
I am pro kayak, and I am pro Ravine Park, so I'm very pleased at the, when I was on the board previously, that we did such wonderful investments in Ravine Park with the watershed, and with the county, it was amazing. And, we need to look at a lift, a lift that's accessible to people down there to allow them to launch kayaks, I think that is a big deal. I absolutely love Ravine Park, my dogs love it as well, and I have snowshoed through there, biked, all of it, it is amazing. If you haven't been there, please check it out, it's gonna be gorgeous in a week or two here with the leaves starting to change. But, yes, we need to look at expanding the launch, so that we can allow for kayaks, an easier, accessible way to get down there for folks to utilize the lake.
Mr. Frankie?
No, I, I guess I didn't know that this was an issue. Excuse me. But I agree, it would be wonderful. Cottage Grove has the kayak rentals now down in Gray Cloud, and, and people are just raving about how awesome that is, and how much fun it is, and how accessible it is. My own kid has done it a couple of times. So, yeah, things like that, that adds, that gets back to adding to that quality of life in our area, and it's simple little things like that, where we can make those partnerships and have that happen, and sometimes it just takes a little bit of investment for a lot of return for people's happiness, so that would be wonderful, because we've done a great job down there at Ravine Park. We were just down there for the ribbon cutting on the new building, and compared to what it was when I was a kid, when it was Swasgow, you know, park, and, and what it is now, it's just phenomenal, so.
Additional comments?
No, I'm just glad he likes the improvements.
Cool. Okay, switching gears entirely now, what does equity mean to you? Where do you think Washington County has made progress with regards to equity? Where do you think progress still needs to be made, and how would you support that? And this one starts with Mr. Frankie.
I guess, I look at that as, I'd have to put it to a specific situation, equity in what? I mean, are we talking equity in schools, equity in jobs, equity across the playing field? I think Washington County does its best to implement an equity, and I think that the things that we can do to make sure that things were equitable are, are to have those discussions, and, and this kinda gets back to partnering with our nonprofits, our churches, and others, to make sure that, where are we doing the right things in the right areas for the right reasons? And, so, yeah, I guess for me, I, I would have to take it situation by situation, because I wanna make sure that, like I've said before, even the little guy is getting a leg up in order to be able to make it like everybody else.
Ms. Bigum?
I think I'm gonna, I think it's two things, I'm gonna go with fair share of our property taxes. So, one of the things that I've often thought about when I was on the county board is Cottage Grove and the surrounding areas, it's the second largest city, right, in the whole county, and we send a lot of our money to Stillwater, and I want to make sure, because I did before, that we get our fair share of that money back in investment, so for our county roads or parks, that equitable share back, right? So, I think that's gotta be a priority for the taxpayers. Second part, I'm gonna talk about business. I think that I would like to see partnerships with the CDA, open for business, to promote women, businesses owned by women, veterans, minority-owned businesses, we need to lift them up and support them, and look at how we can, for all small businesses, look at how we can get them the resources they need to continue to operate and build.
Additional comments?
I guess along, along those lines, I would say, not only Cottage Grove, that sends a larger chunk in, St. Paul Park, and Newport, and the townships, who sometimes don't have that capacity to pay as much in, but I think need more help because they are aging more, so also having those discussions.
Additional comments?
I would say, I agree, and I think that's why I made it a priority when I was on the board last time, to get the culvert on Gray Cloud Island, which was, you were at that ribbon cutting, which was a big deal for the township down there, to make sure they got their fair share of, of the property taxes they send in.
Okay. Failing infrastructure is a major issue on a national level. How would you rate the infrastructure within Washington County, and how will you propose to keep our county infrastructure up to date and in good repair? And we'll start with Ms. Bigum for this one.
I'm, look, there's a large federal bill and large state bonding bills that are just sitting there, we just need, just give us the money, just appropriate the money, we can do this. So, making sure that we are leveraging our local dollars, our matching dollars, to maximize the federal and state money that's coming in, is what I think should be a priority. I personally think to answer the question, that our infrastructure here in the county is very good, I think Public Works Director Wing Sandberg and his team do a phenomenal job of, of working with the city and, and communities to keep up on that and collaborate with them, we gotta continue to do that. I think the one area we need to improve on is Park Grove Library, which is infrastructure, it's gonna be a top priority of mine to make sure that that's improved, renovated, remodeled in the, when I'm the next county commissioner.
Mr. Frankie?
I would say that, you know, because we're growing so fast, a lot of our areas, a lot of those roads, and, are brand new, all of that's brand new, and it's being worked on. Where we have issues sometimes, overall, I agree, our, our infrastructure's pretty good in our county, but there are those areas within our older cities that need help. The bill that I had, that's just sitting there, that we've been waiting on, and I agree, you know, if the governor would just call us back to session so we could pass that bill, I would love to do it, and get money for Third Street. The problem we're having, I think, in a lot of our older, smaller cities, is underneath the ground. It's our inflow-outflow infrastructure, it's our, our water connections, it's our old systems in some of these older cities, like Newport and St. Paul Park, and connecting parts of our newer cities, because that all has to mesh well together, and so I think it's about paying attention to those issues.
Any additional comments?
Yeah, I think it's important to also advocate, as a commissioner, with the state legislators on some of these smaller projects, that are big projects for Newport and St. Paul Park. We have multiple bills in at the legislature in bonding and cash to improve at least three streets in Newport, that they just don't have the tax base to be able to fund, and then there's Third, and so, we really need to, as county commissioners, help them and lift their voices up as well, and advocate for them, especially considering the next county commissioner's gonna have had extensive legislative experience.
Any final comments?
Yeah, in my head, I'll keep it to myself, but, you know, something like, yes, we need to go up there as county commissioners and raise hell, I don't know what else to say.
Okay. Okay. This is talking about alternative transportation. What is your position on providing alternative transportation options which would complement public buses in Washington County? And Mr. Frankie, you get that one first.
I guess for one, we need to get back to work, so that the buses are being utilized, and then make those connectivity routes. We've had discussions about this, about local buses. I remember when I was a kid, I mean, the bus used to come right down my street, and we would get on that bus and either go to Kmart, or up to the pool hall, or we would go downtown St. Paul to Schindler's, to, you know, look for comics, or the candy shop and get some popcorn, or whatever. I mean, we don't have that anymore. We have like a bus that takes off a couple times a day, straight to St. Paul, or hopefully Minneapolis, you know? And we've been trying to do that work, but once again, we have to get people back to work to offset those costs, because, once again, everything costs money, and, and we need to make sure that it's viable to do so. And we could also, this is where we maybe bring in some partnerships with nonprofits and others, and our federal partners, whoever it may be, but it's nice to have that connectivity within your community, especially for our seniors and our children to get from place to place, it just, it becomes so much easier to, to be a community when you have that connectivity.
Ms. Bigum?
I think having consistent, stable, efficient bus service is vitally important to South Washington County for the jobs and to move people. It is one of the top concerns that I hear about, and I will say this, ridership as a whole, we're coming out of a pandemic and nobody has a crystal ball, I called a meeting, and, and Representative Frankie was there, and the current commissioner was there, there's no crystal ball that Met Council knows, Metro Transit knows when everything's gonna open back up, but ridership as a whole is up from the whole system, a 70% increase from year-to-date for express bus ridership. We need to be at the table when this opens up, the county needs to be at the table to help guide a very staff-heavy Met Council to what our needs are, so that we can meet them for our residents. And I will say that a demonstration route, when buses are up and running, utilizing state or federal funding would be fantastic. I also would support a circulator bus to connect from Newport into the Gold Line. I think, I look forward to working on that as well.
Any additional comments, Mr. Frankie? Alrighty. Moving on to our next question. Do you see the county commissioner role as a full-time or part-time leadership position? Knowing the time that this role entails, how will you balance your time to fulfill the position with your current career? And Ms. Bigum, you get this one first.
Well, this will be my job, and I will not be having another job, and I did it really well last time, and I'll continue to balance like I did last time. I really pride myself on being engaged and involved and attending events, hearing from people, going on tours of, of different things in the district, that's how you really get to know your community and their needs, and so, this is my priority, it will be my job, it will be my, it'll be my priority to continue to get out in the community and be active and engaged.
Mr. Frankie?
Thank you Roger. I would say that, first I have to get the job, so I'm asking for your vote. Vote Keith Frankie. Secondly, as a small business owner, I have a great staff, and, and I'll make those decisions once the election happens and when I see the results. I've always been somebody who hasn't taken on a challenge or a commitment that I haven't lived up to, when it comes to serving the citizens of this area, and, and at the point in my life, I may decide to make some changes. So, I think that, at least for now, I'll be somebody that's gonna show up and do the work, I'm gonna be there 100%, I'm gonna be there probably full-time, if not more. I'm used to working three, four jobs, ever since I was 11 years old, and that's what I do. I'm gonna be somebody who's gonna show up and do what's important. I might not be able to make every ribbon cutting, I might not be able to make every picture-taking, I might not be able to be there for every little fun event, but I'm gonna be there to do the work, I'm gonna be there to do what the people boarded me in there to do, and that's to make their lives better.
Thank you. Our next question. What can the county do to address homelessness, homelessness in the community? Mr. Frankie, you get that one first.
Well, there's a, honestly, there's a lot we can do. We need to have more partnerships with our nonprofits, we need to have more outreach, we need to invest in our mental health services, our chemical dependency services, I mean, all these things, since day one of being at the legislature and kinda getting my voice, this has been what I've been preaching. All these things go hand in hand, and a lot of them. There may be a few that just choose to be homeless because that's the way they like to live, and God bless them, but there are those that need our help and need our assistance, and if we can get to them and put them in the right places at the right times with the right people, we can help to solve this problem. And we need to make sure that those organizations and programs are effective, and find the ones that work, and the ones that don't, cut the ones that don't, go with the ones that work, and, and start to get a handle on this, because this is Minnesota, and it gets cold, and the last thing I wanna see i- is harmed to somebody just because they have no place to live.
Ms. Bigum?
I think, again, it's partnerships with our state and federal level, I think making sure that we have, have money for shelters, I was proud that I was able to advocate for that for Ramsey and Washington County, cuz a lot of our homelessness in the shelter go to Ramsey. And I believe that looking and partnering with, with nonprofits to remove that barrier from wraparound services, that needs to really be connected to people, is vital to ending homelessness, and I just think outreach into the community and partnerships to make sure that we're following through on the services that they need to remain stable, to then get into a house, to remove the red tape that is involved in that, so that people can put down roots in a community and invest in a community, and that's what I think all of our goals are, so we need to be that, that voice and that worker bee to make that happen.
Okay. Alrighty. How are changing demographics of our county going to affect the amount and kind of county services that we deliver? Ms. Bigum, that one's yours.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. How are changing demographics of our county going to affect the amount and kinds of services that we provide?
Sure. One, we're an aging county, and so that means there will probably be a greater need on certain services certain services that we need to prepare for. We need to prepare for in our county budget, but also letting our federal and state partners know with programs that they require and how we can efficiently and effectively provide those services. I also think we're having a real wonderful moment of diversity in our county and reaching out to new community, I think is amazing. I was just at a Mung event at Kingston Park. Woodbury is one of the most diverse communities in the metro and we need to connect and welcome and lift and support and be welcoming to making sure that services that are needed or businesses that are to be opened are available, services to help them do that and to be successful.
Mr. Frankie.
Run that by me again, please, Roger.
Okay. How are the changing demographics of our county going to affect the kind and quantity of services that we provide?
You know, I don't know if we necessarily, a change in demographics, we are getting a larger, you know, we're all getting older, me included, but, and we are getting more diverse. I think right now, the biggest thing is our growth. Washington County, just in these areas, as we've all discussed tonight, is growing so fast that we need to make sure that we're all on the same page, like I've said, to be able to implement those services and see where we need to put those investments. It's, it kind of goes back to a couple of years ago, we were having discussions about the school systems. We're growing so fast in the schools and now the referendum failed and we're sitting here going, okay, we're still growing. Where are we going to put that? Where are we going to do with that? So, we need to take care of all of those issues because we need to focus on where the growth is going.
Any additional comments?
Just one real quick. I think we have to use diversity as a strength, especially for economic development, to help open up new businesses and explore culture. I think that only strengthens our community and I think the county really needs focus in on that, especially when it comes to workforce development, but our economic development programming as well.
Any follow up?
I just want to say that. I have to apologize. I'm looking over here, but the stop thing is over here, so I'm not really seeing it. So, I'll try to pay better attention.
We were giving you an extra five seconds. That concludes the regular questions that we have. So, we've come to the closing comments. Thank you both for having, taking the grilling on so many different fronts with us. Mr. Frankie, you have one minute for closing comments.
Well, thank you, Roger. I want to thank Carla for coming. I want to thank the League of Women Voters. I want to thank all the volunteers that are here tonight, the Cable Commission for putting this on, everybody for tuning in, anybody who's going to watch this afterwards. I would just like to say that, you know, once again, I'm asking for your vote for Washington County Commissioner District Four. Keith Frankie.org, look us up. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out on the website, stop down at the Park Cafe, have coffee, whatever we need to do. I want to be able to take the experience that I have as a person, as a representative at the state level and the city level, work together, work collaboratively, build these partnerships to make this county better, make this area better, make investments and help to get the people what they need to live life better, make better decisions to reduce taxes, make better decisions to grow our economy, put people back to work, work on the mental health issues and everything that I can potentially do. I'm running for this position because I care, not because I need to. Thank you.
Ms. Biggum.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Keith for being here and also the League and the cable and everybody watching at home. I just want to thank everybody for the past support and asking for the future support here in November. I would humbly ask for your vote. CarlaBiggum.com for more information about me and MNvotes.org for information about how to vote. Because of your past support, I've been able to work collaboratively on, you know, the Hero Center, getting that and Cottage Grove Ravine Park improvements, Point Douglas Trail improvements, County 19 improvements, 70th Street, the goats in the park, the culvert at Gray Cloud Island. All of these are because I had the opportunity because of the voters to work collaboratively in these communities and I will continue to do that if I am selected to be the next commissioner. So, again, CarlaBiggum.com and I humbly ask for your vote in November.
All right. We'll ask Andrea Hobbly to come up and give us some closing remarks.
Thank you. This concludes our forum for the candidates running for Washington County Commissioner District Four seat. Thank you to the candidates for choosing to run for office and for their participation in this evening's forum. Thank you to all of those who viewed the forum live tonight or who view the recording between now and the election. This is the first of eight candidate forums that the League of Women Voters of the Woodbury Cottage Grove area will be hosting this September. This is one of our most important services to our community. Last year, we had over 3,000 views of our forums. The upcoming forums are going to be broadcast live on South Washington County Telecommunications Commission, Channel 18 and Channel 859, and they'll also be livestreamed on the, at SWCTC.org and their YouTube channel. So, our next forum is going to be in 15 minutes at 8:15. That's Washington County Commissioner District Two. And then on Monday, September 12th at 7 o'clock, Senate District 47 and House 47A and B, 8:15, the same day, Washington County Commissioner District Five. Then on Tuesday, September 13th, 7:00 PM, Senate District 41 and House District 41B. Tuesday, September 20th, 7:00 PM, Woodbury City Council. And Wednesday, September 21st, 7:00 PM, Senate District 53 and House District 53B. And 8:15, Newport City Council. Please make every effort to become an informed candidate, informed about our candidates running for all the offices on this year's ballot and most importantly, get out and vote. We're now going to take a brief break before the second candidate forum this evening. Thank you.